We're at the roll call. Lucy Nolan Gilbert.
President.
Rob Pennell.
President.
Craig Sims.
Here.
Chris Dilbert.
Present.
Tracy Bunkowski is present. Jeremy Rodzek.
Present.
And Rachel Hudson is present. Okay, we're going to go right to our public hearing. A motion to open the public hearing.
同意.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call. Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
Rob Pennell?
Yes.
Craig Sims?
Yes.
Lucy Nolan Gilbert?
Yes.
Rachel Hudson is yes. And Jeremy Rodzek?
Yes.
Okay, thank you everyone for coming tonight. We're going to go through each parcel individually that someone may want to speak on so that you have a chance to speak directly on the parcel and nothing's crossed over from parcel to parcel. So, we're going to start with parcel 0627300021 which sits behind Right Aid. Would anyone like to speak on that parcel?
Yes.
Or would it be your name?
My name is Reddard Barrett and I'm from Brampton, Kentucky.
Ryan, I can't hear him through this thing.
I'm not sure how much we're going to pick up from the audio. Well, we should be picking up from that mic, I'm not sure.
So, can you hear me now?
I'm just going to take it out of my ears so I can hear you.
It's better. So, out of this parcel, 0627300021, behind Right Aid. It is a, I believe, general commercial and they are giving me, they are proposing, actually, the city is proposing multiple, multiple family. So, I don't know, because I could not, because I, we just got a mail only two weeks ago. I could not even explore my options, right? So, I'd have a law here and I request the city to do, don't consider it yet until next planning commission meeting. Before that, we're going to explore our options, why, I don't know, do it, and then we will be able to speak about it. And if you want, the next parcel is mine too, I can, same thing, I, I just want to, the next parcel, 0634153002, I'm interested.
Oh, does anybody else want to speak on the property behind Right Aid? Just while we're here. Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Same thing with the next parcel. It is already multiple homes and they are proposing to save three homes. So, still, I'm not sure, we did not explore our options. So, we'll definitely be able to speak more in next planning commission. So, I request everyone to just delay it, just don't consider anything yet until we get back to the city. But we will, we'll try to do that very soon.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next on our list is parcel 0633103035 on Roselle. If you'd like to speak on this, please come and state your name.
Hi, my name is Raymond Blake, I'm the owner of the parcel. I guess I would like you to not do anything with it right now. I have the parcel up for sale. It's probably been for sale for, rough guess, three years and it's only the last six months that I've started to really get some interest in it. And it's currently light industrial and everyone that's come out to look at it is interested in it as light industrial. So, I would prefer that we keep it that way for now. Certainly, if somebody were to approach me, you know, and want to change it to multifamily residential, I don't think I'd have an objection to that. But all of the people that are interested right now seem to be interested in it or light industrial type things. So, I would hope that you consider just holding off until I see if I can get it sold.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on the Roselle parcel? The next parcel is a group of parcels, so we are going to go through them all independently. 0633, they're all Senator Town in the area of Victoria here. 06, sorry?
What's the address? I'm the parcel owner.
Do you have that open?
All these are the parcels in the downtown?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
They just didn't have the parentheses after it.
Oh, yeah.
A little slow here on the computer.
So, we're looking for 007 first, 0633256.
256.
007.
That is the, that is 58270 Williams Street? That is the road commission property.
So, let's see road commission property. Okay? Does anybody want to speak on that? Okay, 0633226018 and 019 which I believe are 58680 Victoria and 58660 Victoria. Are you able to get up or?
First, let me, let me ask if I might speak from my seat because if I have to sit up here as long as I need to talk, I might have to.
You want me to bring you the microphone, Mr. Drake?
Pardon?
You want me to bring you the microphone?
Um, um, say that.
Let's see what we can do.
Oh, yeah, unless there's slack there. There is no slack. No.
I'll, I'll talk a lot.
Oh, that's good.
Now we can hear you, Mr. Drake.
Okay. I want to speak for, um, 5860 Victoria, that's my homestead. And it's zoned light industrial and they don't want to, before I'm done, I want to speak to 58580 Victoria Street which previously owned a sold on land contract, if I may.
So, I'm sorry, which ones do you want to speak on, Mr. Drake? 18 and 19 or?
Uh, 12 and 19.
12 and 19?
According to the SOA there, you published the letter, it's 12 and 19. Okay, 58, 5, oh, hold on.
I think you would like, sorry, 18 and 19 are 58680 and 58660 Victoria.
That should have been 58, wait a minute, the numbers don't jive here.
Those are your parcels.
What's the number? 5858?
5858 or?
5858. 5858.
Yep.
5858. Okay, 58. The, you've been trying to, I need to first ask a question. Actually, I need to first ask a question. What is this whole rezoning thing? Is this preparatory to the 58 master plan or what? Or is this, did you guys decided that you needed more of this and less of that or what?
We're not going to, just for clarity, we're not going to answer a lot of questions.
None.
The whole goal of it was to make everything a little bit more cohesive with its surroundings. So, yes, with the master plan, but more so about having a more natural flow into other areas.
Okay, so this is not a part of the master plan, outside the master plan?
Generally speaking, it's all a part of the master plan, but it's more about getting the community more cohesive where it's not spot zoned and where it has more of a natural flow.
Okay, all right. All of the land that you've selected that's contiguous with my, my property is zoned light industrial. Of course, you knew that. And it's been tried to change from light industrial to single family, now it's to multiple family. But that's, that's, when you put it all, all that area together and show on your map, it's quite a, quite a large area. It is all together, but that's all, that's about all it has in common. And let me say that, that that land has been in continuous light industrial usage for the last number of years and continues to be. So, I would just like to keep my portion of it as light industrial so we can continue the business. Other businesses that are trying to survive there, to continue there. Let me say a couple of words about why I think that it really is the best usage because exposure to the railroad right across Victoria Street, if there, if, if there was an opportunity in the future and needed rail that has access, a reasonably access to rail. And also, unless you've lived there for sixty years like I have and my family has for, you would, you, you wouldn't, you would object to the noise that's created by the railroad, by the trains going through there constantly, mostly at night. And there, there may be other implications because of the rail, which, you know, is a matter of opinion, like safety and so forth. Overall, on other side contiguous mine property and the, the 580 property is the county road commission. And they're a huge noise maker in the winter due to trucks coming and going and particularly in the winter when salt trucks are coming and going and then, and during the time that they are hauling in gravel and sand for their operation. So, for that reason, I, I think it would be an objectionable site for the proposed use. It's already had natural buffers around it, like the Chuk Green pretty much borders all of the eastern side of it. And so, and I would, I would hate to have to, have to just think of that being used and trying to be developed as a, as a, as a residential use because I think the way it's situated and located, it could only draw the lower end of that residential, you know, that residential home. So, that's my recommendation, I object to the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. Would anyone else like to speak on these, on those specific properties?
Yes.
I'm 58580, I'm the one that is buying it, land contract from George, so.
Are you, are you SHD Properties or, which one is SHD Properties?
He's on the other side.
Oh, okay.
So, anyway, I am the one that's buying it from him, so I, I kind of agree with him, there is a lot of noise from the county, T.O.G. slamming on there all day long. But if it wasn't, he's done anyway, why wasn't it done a long time ago? So, obviously, nobody wants it, I don't want it because I'm paying on it, I just put money down on it, so, you know, I'd like to keep going on and stay there and keep doing what I'm doing. So, I kind of enjoy it, I'd rather not see it.
Could I, just have you state your name, do you please?
Dale Martin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on these properties?
My name is Donald Keys. I used to work for Ferris Bank too. It's always been light industrial, we had defundry, we had pollution, we had so much bad news town that a small businessman wants to make his waves. Yes, there's opportunities everywhere else.
It's all pass-through. There's just 450,000, I mean, 458 acres of farmland that they could put houses in. Finish up the other side of Clark Street. Know why they don't finish that? Because it's Indian Territory where, where Anheuser is. So, you've got very little business here. I work for the Drakes. I work for J&amp;G Traders. I'm a local guy, making local money, helping local people. I propose that, that property be multifamily. There, there's plenty of noise, I work with them. There's plenty of noise from the county. County trucks down Victoria, the train, yes, I'm used to it, I used to do that 26 in aggression. My house is on the ground and now it's a garage. So, all the old, I've seen it all. When's it going to stop? Everything that way is farming. Fine, fine, great, there's plenty of farmland, it's all over. I've been here when Hucks closed, Hucks opened, Hucks closed. Struggling businesses, see where I'm going? So, why haven't I struck hard?
Could I ask again, sir, what property you were specifically speaking on?
5858.
58580 Victoria.
Okay. Um, that is the?
George Drake property.
Sorry?
Yes.
And you're speaking on George's property?
Oh, yes.
On behalf of George?
Yes.
Well, not yet, George, just personally.
Mr. Drake, okay, thank you very much. Okay, would anybody else like to speak on behalf of those two properties?
I want to speak on, I, brothers are excited 31555, the boss for it, director behind the counter. I just have a question as to what, what's the reasoning for the rezoning?
Just as I mentioned, more.
I said I might have missed it.
Sorry, oh, more here. Oh, just more cohesiveness, having more of a gradual move out, like downtown when, having more cohesive in, cohesiveness in the long run, at least I think.
So, basically just cleaning up some of the land.
Yes, the spot zoning and all sorts of things.
You talked about this before, and I'd like to see the offer here.
If there's no one else, I, on behalf of those two properties, I do have a letter that I will read for the record, which is also in regards to these properties. Dear Chairperson, I am the managing member of the owner land contract vendor of the above referenced property, 58680 Victoria Street, parcel 260633226018. Please accept this letter in opposition to the proposed rezoning of this parcel to residential. For many years, this parcel and surrounding parcels have, have been developed as industrial and the buildings are of the nature that are appropriate for this use. I believe rezoning this parcel to single family or other residential zoning would greatly reduce its future value with very limited, if not negative, impact to the village. The parcel has a number of issues that will limit the ability to develop the property for residential use, including an insufficient access road for the increased population, possible wetland and drainage issues along the parcel's border, proximity to the very active railroad line and a large cell tower located directly adjacent to the parcel to the south. Additionally, the village's master plan calls for this area to remain industrial while other industrial areas located front of 26 mile road are to be changed as available. We believe the best and highest use for the above parcel, again, a parcel with some challenges for redevelopment to residential use, would be for it to remain industrial. Very truly yours, SHD Properties LLC, Michael J. Dimill, manager. From there, we're going to move on to our next parcel. Jeff, if you can get me the address on this one, 0633252012?
012, that is 58660 Victoria.
Would anyone like to speak on that property? Okay, we'll move on to the next parcel.
I'm here.
Oh, yes.
Could I ask a question?
Perhaps?
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. I'm looking at the, the zoning map and I see, I haven't been dragging the numbers so well, but I see that one property across Chuk Green, which are zoned single family, the church property is that, why wasn't that included?
I'm not sure. I think.
Why wasn't that included is that, because it's been vacant for so long.
They, you know what, because they just came in with, I think that's why we didn't, because we just came, they just came in within the last seven, eight months or so.
It's already zoned.
It's already zoned, it's going down. Yeah.
It's already zoned.
Sorry.
They come in for single family?
It already, it already is single.
It's already a single family, but you're saying why wouldn't that be, since you're looking at boosting your, I think, I, I think this infers that you're thinking of boosting your multiple family zoning, but why wouldn't that be, because it's pretty.
Well, proposed for downtown is no, is not multifamily, it's single family.
Okay, I, I think that, going back to the original reason, that's a little far off, I suppose.
Yeah, it would be cohesive with what we're proposing for all of them. All of these suggested parcels in your grouping are all proposed for single family. There is no multifamily being proposed.
Wouldn't the square footage we weigh over the square footage for a single family, multifamily, change? They would have to tear that building down.
They would be fine because they already exist there with that zoning.
Oh, okay, yeah. Well, I don't think that would make us. Well, I don't think that would be the building.
Oh, I'm not going to take that as something you're throwing.
My church has been there twelve years, I don't know.
Okay, Jeff, the address for 0633252012 was, I'm sorry.
That is 58660 Victoria.
Okay, did anyone want to speak on that? Okay, 0633252004?
That is, sorry, that is 58530 Victoria Street.
Hi, how are you tonight?
Good, I'm Cheryl, my husband is Jose. My family has been in that house since 1980. We're quiet over there, we don't bother nobody, we don't even get mail service. I don't understand why all of a sudden I get what you such little fancy words, this is your, this is your plan, but really, why can't, I don't understand it. We already can't raise water bills, I'm not even going to go there. But I don't understand, really. What, what would be the reasoning to do this? I get what you're saying, but wouldn't we benefit from it? We've been here all this time, we pay a lot of taxes.
May I ask a question? Do you use your property as a light industrial usage?
No, but I like the fact that I don't have a lot of houses around me. I like the fact that, other than the train and the road commission, I don't, I don't have to hear nobody, I like it like that. That's why we bought that house. We don't have any interest in the kind of zoning changes at all. And really, what would you benefit from it? Because it looks good on the map. I mean, really.
There's not much there. The gentleman's over there, it's all crashing.
They're just trying to work, I mean.
So, people understand when we do these things, this isn't necessarily going to affect you in a way that.
How can you say that?
It affects, it's not going to affect your property as you are.
But it affects my neighbors and that affects me, we're, we're, we've all been together for a lot of years over there. And we like it like that.
This would go in effect for your property when you move. This does not, it, your property will be as it is, but it will be the next person that comes into.
But what if we never sell? What if we're going to never change? Then what was the purpose of it?
So that then, if and when it does happen, and that.
I mean, we could all make plans on if and when, if and when. I mean, unless one or somebody on that street came and asked you, we want to change our zoning, why? I don't understand. Like the gentleman said, there's a lot of other places that could be changed. Is it because you want to move the subdivisions more? We don't want that. We like the way things are over there, nice and quiet.
They're trying to crop out that twelve little acres.
What's that?
Twelve little acres there, they're trying to crop.
Yeah, I know.
I feel it's been a long time, like I said, we have no interest in moving, we like it there.
Right, and no one's coming, no one's.
No, I did that, but, but, I mean, we could all make plans on if and when, if and when.
Right.
I mean, that doesn't make sense, but we're all even here. Unless, unless one of us as an owner came to you and said, we want to change our zoning, it makes no sense, really, it don't.
So, thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to speak on that property, 0633252004? Address, Jeff, for 0633255015?
That is, I'm sorry, that is a village property, that's that street.
Oh, okay.
So, it doesn't have a formal address in the address book, but the accident, that is a double.
That's a D, yeah. Would anyone like to speak on the address of that? Okay, does anybody else have anything they'd like to add at this time? Okay, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, 726?
Seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, we'll be moving on to a pool of the agenda. At this time, I would like to remove two items from the zoning, rezoning parcels and I would like asking for an independent motion away from the agenda for these two items to be removed, which are parcel 0633226018, also known as 58680 Victoria Street, and 0633226019, also known as 58660 Victoria Street. So, after speaking with our legal counsel and planner today, it's been recommended that we remove these two items from our agenda. So, can I have a motion to independently remove those two items? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed?
What was the address on Victoria?
Five eight six eight zero and five eight six six zero.
I think it's five eight zero, zero, not six, six, six zero is the, uh.
It's, uh, it's your properties.
Parcels.
Can you check, double check the matters this morning?
Yes, uh, twenty-six oh eighteen is five eight six eight zero Victoria.
Okay.
And, um, twenty-six oh nineteen, or two two six oh one nine is five eight six six zero Victoria.
Thank you. So, um, we state the motion, I'm sorry, just because we got lost on that. Was that for me, Rob?
I, I think, again, a confirmation.
Well, we, we will.
Well, I don't want to, well, I'm not going on a motion that, I don't, I don't know a percent of information.
We will, we'll discuss. I just need the motion.
Let's remove zero one eight and zero one nine from the, uh, agenda.
Is there a second for that?
Yes, I can.
Okay, discussion.
Excuse me, what's the reason for that and what about, what are the reasons, Jason, so?
We're just going with those two right now.
What were the addresses again?
Five eight six eight zero and five eight six six zero. Okay, so.
Five eight six eight five.
Those are the two, those are the two parcels we're removing tonight for now.
Five eight six six zero and five eight six eight zero.
Correct. Okay, upon, so, um, to the commission, um, today, upon speaking to our legal counsel, who could not be here this evening, and speaking to our planning, it is felt that with those two parcels, we could be potentially putting ourselves in a position of non-conforming use, and it will require more research at this time to see whether it's something that we can do. So the first parcel, um, the south parcel, Jeff, is, can you, I'm sorry, I can't open the map because I've got this going.
Um, what is the question?
The, what is the south parcel?
The south parcel is five eight six six zero.
So the south parcel holds a cell tower. Um, we cannot make a residential property have a cell tower without having significant, um, impact to the owner of that property and, um, and such. So in going to the five eight six eight zero property, which is north of that, then that would still be, that would be considered spot zoning. We do one, it's not fluid, which is why we're doing this in the first place, so we can't go with the second one either. At this time, we're going to look into it to see, but at this time, that is in the advice of our counsel and our professionals. Does anybody have any questions on that? From the table? Craig, are you good?
Um, I just have other things to say about this, uh, another time.
Okay, did you have any questions on that specifically?
No, I do not.
Okay, Lucy?
No.
So, okay, and so everybody is aware this was just determined today. And it's the last communication on, on that. Um, so the motion is on the table to remove those two items from, uh, the rezoning. Five eight six eight zero Victoria, zero six three three two two six zero one eight, and five eight six six zero Victoria, zero six three three two two six zero one nine. Um, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried, I'm sorry.
Aye.
You opposed?
Yes.
So did you get the, the one opposed?
Yep.
Okay, so, next, we still require an approval of the agenda. Uh, John could not make it tonight, so the master plan update is being removed, and I did not get to twenty twenty-two, so anything's good we've done today? So that too, we will just put off till next month.
Doesn't have much good without John either.
No, so we'll remove those two items. So we are looking for approval of the agenda, including changes that we made the first motion on, and the additional changes that we just made.
So move to approve the agenda as of ending.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. So raise two motions on them.
Yep, got it.
Um, there was approval of the minutes dated August third, twenty twenty-one. Did everybody receive those? Okay, motion on those?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, second by Lucy, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, or any opposed? Motion carried to approve the August third, twenty twenty-one minutes. Um, communication correspondence workshop, we have none matters for consideration, zoning and rezoning. So we have before us the, um, Rite Aid properties, the Arlington properties, the Roselle property, and the remaining parcels center of town. So we'll address each one individually with motions individually, um, knowing that on the table is we, is what we had discussed, or that if you would like some more time to table these until another time, either are acceptable at the time. But just note, we have a moratorium as well in place, which limits the time. So we'll first speak on parcel zero six two seven three zero 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 two one, which is the property behind Rite Aid.
I'd like to make a motion to approve that property to be rezoned, for the matter of fact, that, as far as being a general business piece of property facing on Park Street, I don't see it developable. There's also plans already submitted to the village to create a multi-family strip all the way through there, because it's a very deep block, but the frontage is, so, and, and you've got the sanitation pond between the two, not sanitation, excuse me. So it's already naturally divided into another use by that pond, um, which is how it was originally designed in the first place. It was designed to be, uh, Rite Aid in the front, with grass it going downward with the other two units, and that back piece being a, uh, multi-family.
Is there a second?
Support.
Okay, discussion on motion? Okay. So parcel zero six two seven three zero 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 two one, parcel behind Rite Aid, should be changed from multi-family, or sorry, correction, general business to multi-family. All in favor?
Aye.
Or any opposed? Roll call, please. Um, Rob Knell?
Yes.
Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
Um, Craig Sims?
Yep.
Lucy Nolan Dilbert?
Yes.
Jeremy Brodick?
Yes.
And Rachel Whitson, please. Okay, and to be clear, these are recommendations to council. As. Um, so we're gonna move on to, and motion carried for that one. Uh, we're gonna move on to parcel zero six three four one five three zero zero two, the Arlington Decor Park North property. It is currently zoned multi-family, and the recommendation was to zone this single family, one, correct?
I think we just left it open a single family.
Uh, just put the fourth part, mark this, is it single family? Okay, so single family one. So a motion for this property?
A motion for parcel zero six three four one five three zero zero two to change from multi-family to SF one, as the purpose being, that is where we're in need of more property. It's more cohesive with that, that neighborhood that's already being developed there. Um, I think it, a nice sign out there of changing it to natural, kind of move that property out of the nowhere zoning.
Is there a second on that motion?
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Roll call, please. Rob Knell?
Yes.
Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
Craig Sims?
Yes.
Lucy Nolan Dilbert?
Yes.
Jeremy Brodick?
Yes.
And Rachel Whitson, please. Okay, next parcel, motion carried, sorry, for next parcel, zero six three three one zero three zero three five on Roselle. Are any motions on this parcel? It, I'm sorry, property is from light industrial to multi-family.
I mean, that we need as light industrial, we've got a cell. Oh yeah, that's the one that we've got, quite some cells for light industrial.
There is the option to table.
No, I think I'd like to make a motion, then we can discuss it later.
Okay, motion?
Um, I'd like to make the motion to approve zero six three three one oh three zero three five on Roselle Street from light industrial to multi-family, as the bordering properties to the north and east are already residential, and that a natural progression would be from residential to multi-family to light industrial to the, to the south of it.
Is there a second on that motion? Motion failed. Is there another motion on that property?
I'm gonna be a table.
Is there a second on the table?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Roll call, please. Uh, Craig Sims?
Yes.
Rob Knell?
Yes.
Lucy Nolan Dilbert?
Yes.
Uh, Jeremy Brodick?
Yes.
Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
And Rachel Whitson, please. Motion to table is carried on the Roselle property. Okay, now we're moving into the downtown area. The first parcel is zero six three three two five six zero zero seven, also known as the road commission property. Is there a motion for this property?
Uh, motion to change zero six three three two five six zero zero seven to single family residential, as that being, again, the progression of the property over there with Pembroke, um, it's kind of changing things, uh, over there in what are, we hope will be a downtown area.
Um. Single family one or two of them?
Single family one.
Is there a second?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, roll call, please. Rob Knell?
Yes.
Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
Craig Sims?
Yes.
Lucy Nolan Dilbert?
Yes.
Jeremy Brodick?
Yes.
Okay, we removed our, our parcel zero one eight and zero one nine. Next on our list is parcel zero six three three two five two zero one two. Um, I'm sorry, could you refresh my memory?
Five, five eight five eight, fifty five eight, Victoria.
Five eight, five five eight?
Five eight five eight zero.
Does anyone have a motion on this property?
Motion to approve zero six three three two five two zero one two from light industrial to single family SF one, as in the same reason, prior to, uh, coordinate that area, um, all to one.
Is there a second on that?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Craig, if you want to add, if you want to. Yep. Um, sorry, there's some questions on that motion. Are you good, Craig?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, were there any questions on this property?
Yeah, I'd just be some clarification. Because I'm not, and what I have an address, I don't have the exact parcel. If someone had, I see the map, I don't know which, which.
The old Fairchild two.
No.
Fairchild two, across from the people. Old Fairchild two.
Fairchild, okay. And it is, I think one of the questions that I posed to the chair earlier this week was, it's my understanding that that property is, is under contract right now, has been sold on land contract, and my question to, um, to our planner is, when does the actual change take place?
Change would take place when, when village council approves that.
But she just said.
So even though the property is, is currently being sold on a land contract.
She just said when she saw the property, now she's understanding when the council approves it. Which is it?
If the land contract.
No, I'm not gonna reply, you're talking about my wife.
And it's being operated as such, then its grandfather did, and then it will go into effect when the use ceases to exist.
When the use, when the current use, use to be finished and cut off.
No forcing anybody to stop to do the, if it results.
We just say it, we just say it.
You're running a very good point, grandfather.
No, uh, even not.
I'm, I'm not sure, I've lost my mind, so I was trying to. Is that property, I, I'm just trying to get G I F open, is that property north of self, of the Carrera property, which is the north? Okay, so, so, so where is north?
So, so, so in effect, if the other two parcels are being moved.
We have to have the flow, so if you are considering, I will say this before we go further, if you're considering tabling the Carrera property, you would have to also then table this one, because we would be spot zoning, um, if we do one and not the other. Is that, am I seeing that, I'm sorry, I can't pull it up, have I seen that correctly? Okay, so, we, it's, in the flow, we have to do, we can't do one without doing.
That's what I'm saying, because we were to move two persons.
Correct.
North of there.
Correct.
So if, if, uh, if our legal tells us that those problems can't be, can't be changed, so they will remain light industrial.
Correct.
So we'll have the church on the other side of the church green, which is single family.
Single family. It's all simple, all these spots.
So it will be single family, light industrial, light industrial, according to this single family, single family.
So we can, um, if you'd like, there's a motion on the table, is there a motion, Rob, make that motion?
Yes, yes, I do.
I mean, we're gonna table it. Um, action doesn't have to be taken, uh, tonight, we had a public hearing, review it, and look at it again. What, if we make a motion to. What, if we make a motion to not do it, it's done, so, until we put everything out again. So, that's if you want some time to think about it, and sort of look at it in a more cohesive way that we table versus.
Yeah, because I, I, I think we came in with the intent of going down Victoria, making that home street.
Correct.
Single family, and now we had the intent of, uh, not being able to do that, so it kind of defeats what.
The whole spot zone, which, which basically currently is still spot zoned.
Yeah, but it's, we're trying to avoid them.
Right, yep.
Well, if we do all those properties, though, south of the two great properties, we are continuing with what's already there, that's single family to the south of it.
We are continuing to, we're moving north.
But there's already single family homes, there is, uh, I don't, that empty lot that was there forever, that becomes a house now, and there's, uh, the Hunter House, and, so we already have residential down that way.
I mean, I think the one property that we should look at and wonder, like, what do we want it to be in the future, and maybe we start to go backwards, and just go the other way, is the DPW building. Um, the DPW building sits right there, pretty much on Main Street, do we want that, if, if that ever changes hands, to maintain, be, maintain light industrial on that corner, or do we want to make that a more cohesive property?
Then on the backside of that, you have William Street, which is, uh, currently single family two.
Yeah.
So we have a single family neighborhood surrounded by, by industrial. I think we should table it, because I, I think what's gonna be the guiding light is, uh, the final decision on those two properties that we moved. And that's my opinion.
Okay, so right now, we have a motion on the table. Does anybody else have any questions on the motion? So right now, we currently have a motion on the table to approve, um, I think we're on zero six three two five two.
Zero one two.
Zero one two.
Yep.
Do you want to maintain that motion? Do you want to rescind it?
If the, if the votes aren't there to approve it, I would read, uh, I'd take it off, is that how everyone's feeling right now, for further discussion?
Yeah, I think we table it.
Then I withdraw the, uh, the motion.
Okay, do we have a motion to table?
So move.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Roll call. Um, Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
Rob Knell?
Yes.
Craig Sims?
Yes.
Lucy Nolan-Dilbert?
Yes.
Jonathanie Brodick?
Yes.
And Rachel Whitson, please. Okay, we're, um, so that's a motion to table, zero six three three two five two zero one two. Um, next is zero six three three two five two zero zero four, address, um, five eight five three zero Victoria. Five eight five three zero, that would be the Guerrero.
Which is right next to the one we just tabled. I made a motion to table that one as well.
Okay, motion to table, is there a second?
Support.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Uh, I do oppose, as it's already a residential home, and the one's next to it, the one, next one next to it is residentialized. Don't see any reason not to just change it.
Um, roll call on motion. Rachel? Yes, Lucy Nolan-Dilbert?
Yeah, what, to table?
Yes.
To table? Um, Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
Craig Sims?
Yes.
Um, Rob Knell?
No.
And Jonathanie Brodick?
Yes.
Okay, the last one is, um, zero six three three two five five zero one five Victoria, which is our DPW building.
I'd like to make a motion to change the parcel zero six three three two five five zero one five, that's currently in the village DPW building, from light industrial to residential, SF one. I think it's an ISOR from our Main Street. I think that, in all reality, the DPW really needs a new home, a new building, that's one building less, uh, swimming pool, um, and it should be located in more of our, our light industrial area.
Is there a second on that? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Roll call, please. Rob Knell?
Yes.
Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
Jonathanie Brodick?
Yes.
Craig Sims?
Yes.
Lucy Nolan-Dilbert?
Yes.
And Rachel Whitson, please. I see. And so that's for zero six three three two five five zero one five, Victoria, the DPW building, to be, um, from light industrial to single family.
Yes.
Okay, that is all. Did any commissioners have any questions on anything on this subject?
None.
So, we will, um, table, um, possibly, uh, we'll chat, perhaps we'll set a, um, workshop, if people would feel more comfortable with that, for the ones that we tabled. Is, is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
The gentleman that owns the, uh, Rite Aid property and the decorah park, uh, Sonic piece, are you looking, looking to get on the planning agenda? Are you looking to bring something forward?
Yes, uh, I'm gonna sue, uh, I actually hire consultants and laugh on here.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm so sorry. So I already have hired consultants and laugh on here, so we're gonna quickly get back to you. In the meantime, I request you just table it, uh, both the properties, and I request that if it's possible, I want to keep it as it is, and, uh, and one thing I'm gonna ask, when you were talking to that lady, sorry, and you said, when we sell it, right?
Correct.
Then, then it's gonna change.
Well.
So, what was that?
When it's vacant, it's different. So, when it's vacant, it's whenever you submit your site plans. So, your usage in submitting your site plan will have to be compliant with the new usage.
So, that's a site plan, uh, site plan is for, uh, gen.
For the, for the development, so, if you were to submit a site plan for your Decorah Park North property, it would now be a site plan for single family homes.
Oh, that's what I see.
Okay.
Okay, perfect, so I, I request you to just table it?
So, for, if it was not tabled, it was voted on, so.
It was not given?
It was not tabled, it was voted on for the recommendation to go to council for the final approval.
Okay, so we're gonna then, be, before the council?
Uh, yes, that will go to our next council meeting.
Sure.
Okay?
Sure.
And that would be, so you know, next week, Tuesday.
Next week?
Yes.
Okay, no worries.
Sorry. I mean, it goes a long way.
It's, no worries.
Okay. I'll make sure that you get, um, email correspondence.
Yes, please.
Okay.
And I also request, like, whenever there's a meeting, is there any way, like, in there, we are already attached, they send all the meetings, they just ask, like, concerned parties, but here, uh, there, there are few things I'm seeing differently here. First time I, uh, saw a city is going aggressively and changing those rules, I never saw, I'm in this, this forty-five years now, so, I don't know, maybe it's the normal here, but they're like, city doesn't do it, if you go there and do it, and if you city wanna build more houses, they have their properties, they can farm another, and then they conserve it those day. That's a very, I don't know, my shopping for me, all of a sudden, city is in my zoning, and, uh, and secondly, I did not understand why I want to Grashet, Rite Aid is already there, Grashet and, and then highway is near, and all the houses are in there, and swimming is already already building, so who's gonna, who's gonna serve those, if you don't have any, any commercial, any, any class are there, or anything in here? Here's the only houses on housing, you know? Because I'm, I'm seeing the light commercial, sorry, light industrial, and those are the zoning, but, there's no, Jonathanie is going here, somebody has to serve those people too, okay? So that's why.
Can I put a part of it? No.
Sorry, I think he's missing what's next.
Uh.
The next zoning after your property, single family homes, that is not in our jurisdiction, but it's in Lenox, so it would be single family in Lenox. The next set of property of yours would be multifamily, and then you have general business. So, again, it's that flow from high density to low density that's trying to be achieved. So, if yours remained general business, it would be right against residential homes, single family.
So, so next, that motion is on to the.
It's, that will be our council meeting, so our planning commission made the recommendation to council.
Okay.
And that will be on your.
So my attorney can come here?
Yes. Yes, I'll make sure you get, notice that.
Please, thank you.
Okay, so, um, so discussion, action, we're done, master plan, a new business, we have none, planners report, Jeff, do you have anything on behalf of anybody?
Nothing.
Um, public comments on non-agenda items? Anybody like to speak at this time from the public? Okay? All from the table, anybody like to speak from the table?
None.
Anyone? Craig, you good? Um, and a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn is eight oh one.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second on that?